To do everything. And that's what Honorable Chabulani is doing. We clap for him. We are not trying to report. We are not trying to cause rebellion. We want to ask our leaders in Uganda, that as Ugandans, we don't have to be prostituted when we speak. We want to request the present president, that he has been in power for 38 years. He has served three generations. Every generation is 40 years. And it's time for change. He served my father, he has served me, and he has served our sons. Now it's time to serve our grandchildren. Is that fair?
No.
No. So that's why we are here. Honorable Chabulani. Sir, Mr. Chabulani, you're honoured. We want you to take back here to turn things around. So I go to, by saying please, we respect every opposition. There might be some people here who are pausing. Don't take any pictures, don't prostitute anybody. And please, in Uganda, we in diaspora, don't live under fear and intimidation. This is the land of the free. You are free here, and Uganda is free. God bless you. To God and man, and people power.
Thank you so much, Pastor Ali. That's one of our own in the community. Here's the thing. We are not going to relent. We are not going to back down. We are going to continue to press on until our country is free. That's what I want to tell the people in Uganda. Thank you so much. Because of the limited nature of time, I'm going to be inviting Sheikh Dumba just for a minute. Then he will take us into the next session, where he will invite the honourable Member of Parliament to speak to us. After that, we'll have a Q&amp;A session. Questions will be asked. Now. I am not going to impede anyone. We are not going to advocate for violence. Yes, sir. You are going to ask questions, thank you. That's a great question. Thank you so much. Thank you so much. The Honourable is coming, he will address some of those issues. Now. One other thing. One other thing. Bosnians, Bosnians, I love you so much. One other thing. One other thing, Bosnians. The Honourable Member of Parliament. The Honourable, I mean, Member, uh, Committee Members. The Honourable Robert Chabulani, through the advice of his doctors, is not going to be shaking hands, and you know why. Because... I'm just putting it out. So he won't be shaking hands. So don't be disappointed if he doesn't shake your hand. Is that okay? Okay. Let me take this opportunity. The youth are going to ask questions, don't worry about them. Let me take this opportunity. And he will take it from here. Thank you so much. People power! People power! Our power! People power! Ladies and gentlemen, again, let me take this opportunity to thank you all in sparing this time to come and be with us this night, or this evening. And I'll be addressing Honorable Chabulani to the Parliament of Uganda. We in the US have been taught, and we are good students, that's where we are come most of the time. In the US, we are taught that we can demonstrate. In the US, we are taught that we have our rights. There are 193 nations, and the United Nations, that are signatory to embracing and keeping and promoting basic human rights. Including the right to worship, including the right to associate, including the right to move, and including the right to pay back to our nations. Honorable Chabulani, my name is Abdel Dumba. I will not put it on record because I know it's going on record. A Ugandan by birth, a citizen of the nearest states. Most of my parents never in life has my parent touched the land in the US, of the US. They were all Ugandans. They died in Uganda. My eldest children are all in Uganda. I have some roots that are untouchable, unbreakable with Uganda. And so I think, and I'm sure, that every Ugandan that is in the diaspora today, we share the same. We all love our dearest Uganda because that's where we came from. We would not be known. The 25th of 2014, Ukhadi Mwaya in the eastern part of Uganda was also killed by Yan. December 28th of 2014. Imagine, they target two, two sheikhs, two Muslim clerics every year. At the beginning, even the middle, or the end of the year. Sheikh Mustapha Rahiga was also gunned down. May 2015, Abdul Rashid Wa Fulah was also gunned down. June 3rd, 2015, Hassan Chilya gunned down. The gentleman who used to be a sheikh, who was considered to be a rebel, who decided to go and partner with President Museveni, Sheikh Mohammed Chigundu, giving all his life and said, "I'm going to serve the nation." The pair was to gun him down. Chigundu gunned down. And lately, the young man, the blood of Uganda, someone that is serving Allah to secure Uganda, a young policeman, Mohammed, who? Mohammed Chilumira is paid by a bullet. To all of those people, for all of those people, the Muslims have this message to the government of Uganda. They have to produce a list of every single person. President Museveni has to produce a list of every Ugandan, every Muslim that was killed, and invite the family members that pay them and tell them, "This is the reason. Bring that person in front of that family and let them speak directly to the part, the killers of those, those gentlemen, and say, 'This was the reason why we killed your dad.'" I think that would be fair. He is cynical man. A young man who said, "I'll stay next to my brother, the young blood." I'm an old fellow. I'm old. I'm not able to go and run, do whatever they do. Honorable Chabulani. But if a young blood stands up and says that I'm going to fight for the nation, fight for Uganda, not hitting anyone but through the bullet and you kill that person, this is the message, ladies and gentlemen. We have to say, to call this to its end and say, "Enough is enough." Honorable Chabulani, I know you are one. But I know here that you have 10, maybe 15 other Members of Parliament. But maybe they are scared to stand up and speak the way you speak. But I want to give every single one some good news. That your day will come and no one will stop it. When that day comes, no one will come and intercede and say, "No, you cannot go. You will have to go." Mohammed Chilumira say, that if you speak, you die. And if you don't speak, you die. And indeed, was killed. Muslims do not defy the fact that people die. We don't deny it. We believe we have to die. Actually, Muslims do believe they will die. But the fiction, the circumstances under which someone is killed, that's where the question arises. Honorable Chabulani, we will invite, we will give you this passage. This is coming from the Muslims in the diaspora. I'm here in the US. I can guarantee you that I'm not speaking for all Muslims in the diaspora. But more than that, more than that, I'm speaking for all Ugandans. Kwezi was a fighter, was a protector of all Ugandans. Regardless of his belief, I bring God, regardless of his tribe, these people don't deserve to die to be killed using a bullet. Honorable Chabulani, please be the voice, and we shall pray. And that's our only God, to help you and lead you through the journey together with those people that are troubled with you. When your time comes, you will also go. But better go when you have done something. We believe today, we believe today, you have done some part. You played your part. And we believe, if you have to depart, let it be. That's going to be God's decree, nothing can change it. There is that gentleman, who was accused of running in Komowa N'arivatene Naviji. The embassy had paid a dividend for President Museveni to Ugandans, Muslims, all over the diaspora demanding death. And these people have to be brought to Masogarana Ravaan Far, Badate Rava. But I think Izirwachi Abantawa will never kill them because no one is following them today. We have to stand for them. Thank you so much again, Honorable Chabulani, for coming. Thank you, organisers, for organising this. And please, Mosonyo Lokwad, just this time of the Wambu, but I'm emotional sometimes, when I'm emotional, you don't control yourself, but I think I have controlled myself. Thank you so much. Komwa Ami, Zina Ogbun. People power! People power! People power! Chabulani, Bobby Wine, oh yeah! Chabulani, Bobby Wine, oh yeah! Sake, oh yeah! Chabulani, oh yeah! President Museveni, please! Please make joke at that, make joke at that, sit your voice! Make joke at that, make joke at that, sit your voice! I can't remember now, I can't recall. Ladies and gentlemen, Museveni Komomaso. Thank you so much, you can move forward. And then Museveni Komomaso. Museveni Komomaso, I do not feel some of moving into the mask. As he do that, ladies and gentlemen, I have the honour. Ladies and gentlemen, ladies and gentlemen, I have the honour. I am given another task. And this is one of the biggest tasks. Maybe I have to be humble because I never know, you never know. This is probably one of those big individuals that is going to come, that is in making, that I'm inviting today to address this gathering. Ladies and gentlemen, I have the honour to invite Honorable Robert Chabulani to town. Thank you so much, Fana Gueye, Katukakane, Turezey, Tutoa, Nsajenos, and even N'arivatene Naviji. Ladies and gentlemen, the youth were complaining. They said, "We only see Duka. We see Abasanyaku." But this is one of yours. Honorable Robert Chabulani is one of you. So please listen and take the message of courage for I am beyond. Thank you. Listen to this. I say, "We are fighting for freedom." We are fighting for freedom. We are fighting for freedom. Thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I must say, I am overwhelmed. Many times I have come, questioned. I am humbled, leaders who are terrorists, but don't behave like terrorists. Who, that I make man stand, for Haji Mosakari in Kanawa, in Masaka. Yes, my mother comes from a Muslim family. And it is worth a visit that most of my closest friends are Muslims. Muriyali is a Muslim. Adam is a Muslim. Also, you in the cause, for standing with us when you try to raise the voices of reason, when you try to highlight the plight of Ugandans. I must say that, maybe I wouldn't be alive if you did not exert the pressure that you exerted. You guys may not know, but you actually saved my life. You enabled me to trouble here, but you continue to save the lives of the people back home. It's at this time again that I want to send my thoughts and kind regards to our comrades who continue to suffer. Some are in hospital, some are in jail, and yes, some died. We lost my brother, Yasin Kauma. I'm sorry if I mention him again and again and again. We lost a very close friend and brother, Afande Mohammed Chilumira. We lost a brother called Serungaya. This is a guy that the world would never know. He was just a few classes ahead of me in our school in Ugamba, in Bukalaji. This guy was dragged from his house and shot. Dead. And of course, many brothers, whose names I don't even have a hate, the guys who are killed in Mitiana, and the many, many other people that continue to suffer in our country. Please don't get them out of your prayers and thoughts. Ladies and gentlemen, like I said initially, I used to be just an artist, having my fun. Every time I came to Boston or to other parts of America, it was a business of signing autographs, working with my swagger, doing my music and making money. And yes, like I said earlier, I still miss that old life. But I expect that it will not just be entertainment, it will be entertainment. And I took it in no child, and I dare to believe that we people can, each one individually, play a role in the liberation of our country. Why do we talk about our country? Ladies and gentlemen, first and foremost, I want you to know that I am not here to teach you anything new. You know what I am talking about. Many of you happen to be in America, not simply because you don't like home, but because what is happening home is not what you feel you deserve. And you jump in our country because our talent, our job of other people, particularly the Brits. My condition is put to shame. Yes, you've seen it. And I'm not saying this because it's Muslims that invited me. But we've seen many unmentioned cases of Muslim clerics coming to court limping, and it does not even make it to the news bulletins. I was joking with my friend after they assassinated the Honourable Abirika. May he rest in peace. He made a tweet and said, just a few minutes after Abirika was shot, he said, "If you are Muslim and you live near Kawanda, run." Because that is the soft target. That is the kind of country where we live, where corruption is the order of the day, where extrajudicial killings is the order of the day. And indeed, the president in his recent State of the Nation address, he mentioned that he knows some of the killers. He just didn't explain why they are not apprehended. That is the country where we live, ladies and gentlemen. So many of you who are here, you, you, you... What is happening home, you know it. Many of you are more knowledgeable than myself. I'm only glad that they go to people where I come from, raised me, and gave me the opportunity to be able to address you, ladies and gentlemen. And it is that opportunity that I want to try and maximise every given opportunity in my life, at least for as long as I live. So ladies and gentlemen, when you see me talking to you today, it's not out of fun. I don't enjoy this, no, I don't. There's not even instrument to. It's not music, it is not fun. I don't like it. But because this is where we are pushed. It's because every day my children are growing and I want them to live in a better country. It's because nobody is safe. And maybe it's because the... Say, Bobby, we love you, but, I mean, you have a successful music career and you're a Member of Parliament. Why don't you just embark on your big music career and your parliamentary salary and enjoy what you call is a comfortable life? I mean, Bobby, you've made it. You, you have goals that you don't try. You have money that you don't spend. What is your problem? Ladies and gentlemen, when I look at the life of the people where I grew up from, the many friends that I miss only once a year, or once in two years, or if I spend three, four years without coming to America, then I won't see them. In those four years, I was chatting with my friend Laban today. I always take silly jokes with my friends. And I told him, "Man, it's like you're dead." And he also said, "Yeah, Bobby, it's like you're dead." Because we never see each other. We just meet once in two, three, four years. We lost that. Which kind of would be a privilege now? We don't see each other because conditions don't allow it. So, looking at all that, ladies and gentlemen, we struggle because we looked ahead of where we are. I see when we close our eyes, even amid this pain, even amid these challenges, when we close our eyes, we envision a Uganda that is comfortable for everybody. A Uganda that offers equal opportunity for everybody, regardless of who you know or where you come from, regardless of your tribe, your religion, or your religion. Where you work hard, you are sure. Uganda, where, when I go back to the ghetto, I know that those killers who I went to school with are not going to die giving back simply because there are no gloves or cheap things like those in hospitals. That is the country that we want. A country generally where, you know, people reign supreme, where neither the sum of people, nor the vice versa. But today, in Uganda, the gun is the master, and all citizens are slaves. Okay? It does not work like that. America has more guns than us, but the people reign supreme. So that's the kind of country that we want. Unfortunately, that is not the country that we have. Back home, we live in fear. You cannot even expose a crime because exposing a crime is seen as committing a crime. And that is why we lost Chirumira, and we continue to lose people like that. Who want to live in a country where we are not ruled by fear. In a country where we are free. Because it is achievable. It is not magic. That is what we were promised in 1986. So ladies and gentlemen, when you see us struggling, we are not just having fun. We are not doing it for fun. Okay? We are raising your voice and we're trying to reach out to everybody because we know everybody has a role to play in this. And when we thought and thought and thought, we realized that we've been promised the same thing since independence. Regime after regime, regime after regime, each one promises a fundamental change. Until we realize that the only solution is not to blame on individuals, but on all of us. And that we, that we need to alert that unifying spirit, that unifying aspirations, because we have the same hopes and indeed same fears. And that is how we came up with the idea of people power. Because people power is our power. And our power... So ladies and gentlemen, allow me to assert again that people power is not about Bobby Wine. Don't even get it wrong. I am only here as one of the over forty million Ugandans. Who are actually very many, keeping us in peril. You live in America, you will say to me that here in America, even if you walk, your poverty only stops in your house. But when you walk out of your house, enjoying the world of the United States. It makes you forget how lucky you are until you get everything. That is not what, that is not what you want. And it's bearing the vision of all of us, for all of us. But if we stand together, we'll make a point because we are equally as important as each other. Do not leave it to us. Don't leave it to me. Okay? I was arrested, beaten, and incarcerated. I was not even able to read a single Facebook tweet, I mean, Facebook post or a tweet, or even read newspapers. But you made it happen even without me. I want you to know that you do not underestimate your ability. Even as we go back home, I know they plan so many evil plans for me. But I want you to know that as long as you stand, it does not matter what they do to a few of us. The power of the people has started and it cannot be stopped. I know that our government does not know how to deal with us. They don't know how to deal with us. It has never happened. We have never been as united as we are. They have never seen so many young people with one voice and one resolve. They don't know how to deal with us. They don't know what to tell us. They cannot lie to us anymore. Okay? They cannot intimidate us anymore. They cannot block our... They cannot send us anymore. You see, over late, I have seen some desperate measures by the government. They've struggled so much to label us a violent group of people. I want to make this clear. We are not a violent group of people. We despise violence. Okay? We are not violent. They said wants us violently because it's the only language they know. Okay? They are the masters of violence. Okay? So they want to label us violent so that they can respond to us with violence. Okay? They want to provoke us into violence so that they do what? They want us to kill us, but we are smarter than them and are one at this juncture. What's the economy you? People power! I will remind you that the Minister of Security was on national TV. Because you advocate for people power. But to me, that should make us glad. Because even the great Nelson Mandela, he never a terrorist by the afternoon. Okay? They've gone ahead, I am informed, to print T-shirts which are ready to plant people among us, to throw stones and cause chaos so that they can respond to us with bullets. I am calling upon you, my brothers, especially those at home, do not fall in their trap. Let us continue to be smarter than them. And yes, you have seen the head of state moving with bags of money. Yes, you've seen them move with bags of money, our money. Taking you to the ghetto people to buy them into silence because they don't know how to deal with us. But I also said to them, I could say... Now, for you people who live in America, and indeed all people that have had a rare opportunity. Finally, finally, I want to call upon you brothers and sisters to continue being assertive and mention it that you guys are special ones. Back home, we hold each one of you in a high regard. Because yes, the money that they are using to oppress us, they are actually borrowing that money in our names. And it is us and our children and our children's children who are going to pay that money. So I want you guys raising your voices. I just spoke to the mayor of Waltham. And she's helping us raise our voice in the necessary offices. And indeed, I've spoken with few leaders. I'd rather just you see the results. People power is stronger than people in power. I thank you, ladies and gentlemen. I thank the team that has been so patriotic. Um, all the colleagues that I cannot mention. I thank the Muslim leaders. Listen, now this, this appeller will go to the young people there. Listen to me, listen to me. Listen to me, all the young people in the house. All the young people in the house. I just want to remind you that you're stronger than me. Thank you so much. Thank you so much, ladies and gentlemen. Fana Gueye, thank you for the warm welcome and thank you for the motivation and the support and everything that came from that side.